9:00 AM, I'd like to welcome everybody to the work session of February the 21st of 23 to Limestone County Commission. Ellen, do we have any public comment?
Yes, John Witt.
If you don't mind, Mr. John Bob, step right up here to the microphone, please, sir.
(inaudible) small room, I probably need a mic. I've given the county commission a copy of a pack of papers that I have, and what this is in reference to is the watershed protection program, Sulfur Creek, Elk River watershed protection. So, interested time, I read a prepared statement. "In recent months, many people and organizations have visited our family property in the properties of the Alabama Health Development Agency, or AERDA. These visitors include the Alabama Department of Environmental Management, or ADM, TBA, Forestry Commission, the Department of Agriculture, and others, each expressing the same concerns to us as I've previously expressed to the local school board. Each of these organizations are currently addressing problems caused by the lack of adherence to by what ADM calls the offending party, to required standards of Alabama code on the Elkmont Elementary site. The latest defenses relate to stormwater runoff, water quality, excessive erosion, and sediment deposits. Additional problems caused by excessive stormwater runoff include crop damage and crop loss, mission wildlife issues, sediment and sludge deposits. We're requesting that the Board of Education hold the offending county party accountable on-site mitigations, and ask that the commission periodically check with the Limestone County Board of Education to check progress as the actions on-site affect residents and commission constituents off-site." Our request is simple. We want the water that exits the Elkmont Elementary site to be clean and/or filtered before it leaves the site. Per the report, the ADM report, I've previously emailed each of you on the commission. I've included a one-page summary in your packets today. The packets also include a map of the site, the direction of stormwater runoff, and the volume, specifically of the 26-acre site, 13 acres, or half, drain directly into our creek and waterways of the AERDA, or what ADM calls the waters of the state. For other enclosures in your packet, we request that the Corral Alabama Code 9-9-73, powers and duties of commission officers or directors of sub-districts generally, is you assist us, our family, in implementing mitigation measures off-site. I further propose that the county commission partner with us and the organizations listed previously in what I have initiated as the Sulfur Creek, Elk River Subwatershed Protection Program. This includes areas and property along Davis Branch Creek, Sulfur Creek, Whitty Creek, and the Elk River. I've spoken with several landowners along this watershed and received lots of positive feedback. With us as the northernmost part of the current contractors, the area that they're currently working in, our family property borders the northernmost part of this sub watershed, again, are not compliant with standards as required by the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. Specifics concerning this plan in this packet will be more forthcoming as other partnerships are made and specific implementation plan reviewed and initiated by proper federal and state authorities. So, what I've done is given a general map of basically District 4. Page 2 is the direction of the erosion, the actual ADM report, it's a 47-page document I just gave you guys, two pages, the county commission authorities, the affected wetland downstream, and ADM programs for, if you take them programs, $52 million just got approved by APA for merchant pollutants that this county can benefit from. It's not just us, but the quicker growing areas in Tannery Slodestove. So, this is applicable to every district, but our concern right now is our family property.
Thank you, gentlemen.
John Plonk?
Mr. Plonk, if you don't mind, I'll step up here, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I've shared with you all in the past couple of weeks, updates on the opioid litigation that's been going on for about five and a half years now. I know that county has already received the first installment of, a small installment, I think it was thirty-something thousand dollars. But what I'm asking y'all to do today is to approve a resolution saying that the settlements that are being entered into around the country, and in our state where the Attorney General has led a good bit of the litigation, that y'all would say that, that receiving this money is in the best interest of Limestone County. Going back very briefly, when we started this process, Mr. Sam, it may have been on the commission, I think everyone else is new, but we, we established back then through Commissioners and through Sheriff Blakely, that eighty to ninety percent of the medical cost in our jail were because of treating people with had drug overdoses or in some cases having to put them in the hospital. Had one gentleman die, it cost the county over fifty thousand dollars in medical care. I've shared with you in the past, I know Ms. Morrell has about ten pages of suggested uses for this money. I've shared that with y'all before, I know y'all want to review that again. Those are not final, but I would ask, I told you it wasn't going to be a test on what I sent y'all, it was pretty voluminous. And for the public, anyone else, the information I shared with the commission is on, is online. It's not anything confidential, so any citizen would be, could read that and if they wanted to. Let me mention one thing before, I came by this morning, I saw the sixteen-year-olds out there lined up in the parking lot to get their driver's license or at least take the test. I'll be seventy next month, and so it's been fifty-four years since I stood over in line at the courthouse and waited on Mr. Taylor to give me my test. And we had to parallel park back then, I'm not sure anybody knows. But I would just say this, I, I wouldn't live anywhere else, other than the seven years went off and flunked out of Auburn and I made it through Alabama Law School. I wouldn't live anywhere else in a lot of it, because people like you through the years have been willing to serve, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else, Ellen?
Yes, Gene Hillard?
Mrs. Hiller?
Hillier?
Hillier's. Come on, microphone, please, man.
Gentlemen, I live on Moyers Road, and I vote. You've been elected by the people of Limestone County to take care of the business of running it. You oversee fire departments, sheriff's office, road paving, and a number of other things that I'm sure I'm not aware of. People look to you to provide safety for them to live and raise families, to educate their children, and grow old. These things make a good community and add to happiness of those who live there. Home, that word means a lot of things, a place, a house, people, my home, my house, and twenty, thirty other people's houses are being threatened with devaluation almost immediately, once the asphalt plant on Moyers Road goes into existence. We're at risk of our health being harmed, although ADM says the air will be okay, but this group of people are probably the most useless in our state, when it actually comes to the well-being of people. Stress also adds a factor to health concerns. A constant construction zone, which I've lived in for six years, constant trucks and dirt, the noises associated with dump trucks have made my once peaceful home and many other homes not. The banging of trucks on the ground that sound like gunfire. Traffic on Moyers Road is constant on school mornings. Anyone living to the west of Tanner High uses that road. Young people, new drivers, lots of farm equipment. I dodge the potholes. The intersection of Moyers and Lucas Fairies has seen many deaths there. Trucks and a farmer's lane paved over do not make a good road. When we built our house there twenty-three years ago, you could still see the furrows in the road from where the area was plowed, and now you want to add to that. Four hundred and eighty-eight trucks per day hauling asphalt in and out, gravel in and out. You now are throwing up your hands and saying, "We can't do anything. There's no zoning in the county." Well, if you take a close look, you are slowly being annexed out of a county for that reason. It gives people like Halston Carter the ability to sneak in and do what they have. Do something to stop this plant. If it goes in, it will also be a thorn in your side. The integrity of the owner is in question, so what makes you think he will comply with what ADM requires? He said he didn't even know for two years he was taking dirt off a piece of land that at that time was in the city of Athens. He's a teller of tall tales. And it still amazes me that Grayson Carter and Son are given jobs by you to fix the very roads that they are destroying, and they get paid for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Anybody else, Ellen?
Yes, Wayne Dennis.
Mr. Dennis?
Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Morning.
So, I'm Wayne Dennis. I live fourteen-eight-nine-five Lucas Ferry Road, about two miles north of the plant that we're talking about. This just came to light recently, had no idea. Moved my family there about two years ago. We've been in the house a year and a half. Moved out to the country, nice, clean air, sort of for the boys to play in the yard and grow gardens, this kind of thing, right? Nice little piece of, piece of land, we're excited to get it. So, we come to find out about this, this asphalt plant. My, my first reaction was, I feel sick to my stomach. And I, and I can understand. Bear with me, I'm not the fondest of the public speaking, but I'm going to try to get through this. Looked at the, the permit. I'm a mechanical engineer, professional engineer in State of Alabama and South Carolina. I reviewed the air permit, actually even got to talk to the gentleman from ADM. Here are my main concerns. It seems like this plan is going to happen. I don't know that it can be prevented, the air permit has already been approved, but, you know, this plant still has, it has a baghouse, right? Ninety-nine point nine-six percent efficiency at its peak, when it's operating the best. You still have the potential of releasing four point nine-three tons per year of, of particulate that's going to make it past that baghouse, okay? That's assuming that they run at the rates that they requested. The permit goes all the way up to, they could produce a quantity of seventy-four point three-seven tons per year. Now, where does this go? Whose property does it land on? Different times of the year, it blows in different directions, right? You got schools, y'all know where it's at, right? You got farmland right across the street. Where does, where does the, I don't know if it's soybeans, whatever it is, where does that go after this particulate falls on the top of it? What's in that particulate? Who, who really knows? I mean, we all know there's carcinogens in the particulates. This is, this isn't a, this isn't an Amazon plant, right? This isn't just a warehouse. This is handling hazardous chemicals, right? So, the way this permit was written, they've basically been limited the amount of fuel consumption that they're able to do to, and to get just below this Title V air permit, right? Title V air permit would have required them to have more time, more public involvement. There would have been better time for the community to speak up, and there would have been more studies, air dispersion models, PSD. You got, you guys can look this stuff, I can leave this with you. My main concern, on top of all that, let's assume it's all clean, right? Let's assume they get, there's nothing dangerous to our kids' health, anyone's health. Let's assume it's dispersed and it's okay. You still have twenty-one tons per year of sulfur dioxide that's making it out of that plant. So, you sit in traffic while they're repaving the road, right? It smells terrible, right? You know what, you know, I, I spend ten hours a weekend, probably in the summer, cutting grass. You get where I'm going with this? What, what are they going to do to help prevent that sulfur dioxide, that smell that we're going to have to deal with? We really need to push hard to make sure that they put abatement measures in place. If the plant's going to exist, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Cynthia Gibson?
Ms. Gibson?
My name is Cynthia Gibson, and I'm disappointed with the action of this office regarding the asphalt plant. It was treated as a simple residential issue instead of the toxic industrial problem it will be. Per ADM, the asphalt plant is a zoning issue, and the county commissioners are the head of zoning. What has this department done to stop or prevent this plant from locating in Limestone County? From my research, de-annexation is a high electoral hurdle. The city voters get a vote, and sixty percent has to favor de-annexing. The city skipped this because of the expense, the expense of the election and the extra time to complete it. I assume you know that. The commissioner's other exception was to exclude agricultural land from a city code, a process that does not require an election, only city council approval. I guess y'all knew that. However, the asphalt plant site is residential, not agricultural. It would be between two houses. In my eyes, since this was not worded, residential, agricultural, this is an illegal de-annexation. This appears to be the red tape dodge for people's lives. These are people on, there's people on each side of this plant site, and no one got to vote the de-annexing out. Asphalt plants have no maximum operating hours, as they shut down in the winter because the asphalt will cool too fast. Just the heavy traffic alone, with extremely hot asphalt, with temperatures ranging from two hundred and seventy to three hundred and twenty-five degrees, traveling in a residential area is dangerous. The toxic fumes go with these trucks, and they have to move quickly to prevent asphalt from cooling too much. How can they do that with the traffic we have in this area? Rock quarry trucks, eighteen-wheelers, school buses, postmen, UPS, and Federal Express trucks, heavy farm equipment, the residence vehicles, and they will dodge these issues while dealing with trains, two-lane roads, and low speeds, and all the speed zones in our area. There are numerous health problems people will struggle with, including breathing issues that we already deal with just living in the Tennessee Valley. But no one has even thought of the fire and explosion hazards of an asphalt plant, especially in a residential area. I've heard Mr. Gatlin say, "An asphalt plant doesn't smell bad." Y'all obviously didn't research this. Asphalt plants have low power time. When the asphalt is not being heated, the plant doesn't smell. But if the plant is heating asphalt or during high-power time, you get to smell natural gas, a skunk, burning rubber, or rotten eggs. I read this in black and white, and I heard a witness that passed an asphalt plant regularly that verified this fact. The contamination can cause cancer, headaches, loss of concentration, nausea, nose, throat, and eyes irritation, damage to the kidneys, liver, and lungs, dizziness, fatigue, depression. It can affect the central nervous system and cause skin irritation. Yet, the county commissioners see no dangers for the people living near an asphalt plant built in a residential area. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
William Barber?
Hey, Mr. Barber?
Just fine, sir. How are you?
Doing great. Again, my name is William Barber. I live off of Lucas Ferry Road. My property is right up against this asphalt plant site that's going up. I do have some issues that pertain to the de-annexation process for the land coming from a residential agricultural city limits to now county property with no limitations at all, because of zero zoning processes. Looking into how the vote went with the city council, there was a, a no vote. That should have automatically sent this straight to the probate judge to establish a vote, a public vote, so the citizens can vote on it. They bypassed that. I also know that this city council was made up of different personnel at the time, one of whom I believe works for Grayson Carter and Son right now. I'm looking at, from my perspective, do I have a collusion problem going on with the city council, the mayor's office, and possibly the county commission? If there's some backdoor deals going on here that are not done for the public good, not done for the public health, we need to know about this. We need to rectify the problem, vote the people out, or maybe have the state attorney general come investigate, find out what's going on in Athens City, and Athens, and Limestone County. All of what you've heard already is true. These, these issues are going to affect over sixty homes within two thousand feet, or six thousand feet of this plant. Property devaluation, just at thirty percent, will cause a loss of six, six, six point six million dollars in property value. That doesn't account for the farmlands and how much they're going to be devalued, especially if these contaminants land on the crops and create problems. The manipulation of the property that they are preparing for this asphalt plant falls directly on you as a commission, as to what they're doing to it. They've already destroyed wetlands there. I'm pretty sure they didn't have a permit for that from ADM, or from the EPA, or from the Corps of Engineers. I, I am charging you with contacting the Corps of Engineers. Bring them in, have them evaluate what Grayson Carter and Son contracting has done to this land. That is in violation of the wetland regulations and rules. I'm worried about water runoff, which is a big problem right now, onto my property and into the creek that runs right through the property that they have, that eighty-eight, eighty-one acres. Another issue, if, if they have an accident or incident, all that mess will go straight into the groundwater. We have folks that are drawing from that groundwater to drain from and to water their crops, spreading more contamination. This is a terrible site for this. I believe you also could take another action. Not grant Grayson Carter and Son contracts for asphalt work within the county until they rectify this problem that they've got at their asphalt plant site. The city of Athens has already offered them two or three sites that they could relocate this asphalt plant to, which would be the proper place for it to be. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
No further comments?
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your comments today. All right, moving forward, we'll get into the work session portion of it. First thing on the agenda will be for approval of minutes from February the 6th of 2023. Do we have any discussion with anybody thinking about the minutes? No. The next thing on here will be the claims, the amount of one million, three hundred thirty-one thousand, seventeen dollars, seventy, and seventeen cents, seventy-two cents, anything? Anybody got any discussion with that, or any claim being paid? All right, we have no public hearing today. Resolutions and orders. First resolution on here will be to approve a resolution allowing Limestone County Commission to enter into an agreement with the state of Alabama through ALDOT for the widening and additional turn lanes on Service Road County, I mean, Service Road 127, from Bob Jones Parkway to Upper Fort Hampton Road to benefit the Elkmont Elementary School. And I will let Mark explain if you got anything on this, what it is, it's the state has to.
The state, the state came to us, they are, they are in the process of trying to do a project for State Route 127 to, to do turn lanes. The school board is going to pay twenty percent of that cost. So, the state came to us to, state came to us as, to become kind of a grantee to, from the state, so that there would be a method for the school board to turn around and, and pay their portion. So, it's kind of a, would become a pass-through entity between the school board and the state, and the state DOT.
And eighty percent of this is paid for? The local delegation gave them a grant, or?
No, this is, it's, it's paid for through DOT federal aid funds. So, these are actually federal funds being spent. Twenty percent would be paid for by the school board. Like I said, this would just be, we'd just be a pass-through entity because the state of Alabama DOT doesn't have a mechanism to enter into an agreement with the, with the school, Limestone County School Board.
Anybody got any discussion with that?
Is this turn lanes only, is there not?
There's turn lanes.
Is there a light in?
There's no light.
In the, in the light?
It's turn lanes for the school.
I heard, I'd heard of light being mentioned at one time.
No, not that I've seen. Now, we're not, again, we're not in the design, we're not, we're, we are strictly a pass-through entity. So, the, the state DOT is the ones responsible for design, and the school board's responsible for twenty percent.
Anybody else got any discussion? All right, second on here will be to approve a resolution authorizing Limestone County to join the state of Alabama and other local governments that's participating in the current and future opioid settlements. And this is what Mr. Plonk spoke on. We have done this in time past. I know we've done it once before, so anybody got any discussion with that? It's just for we can get some of the money that the state is giving back on that, so.
Appreciate Mr. Plonk coming to us and explaining what's going on with it. And a lot of work goes into that. Thank you.
All right. And third on here will be to approve a resolution authorizing the chairman to execute any and all documents necessary to obtain financing for the commercial loan, including but not limited to the note and security agreement for the financing of ten, this is 2024 Kenworth TA, TA ADS's dump trucks, and two twenty-four-model Kenworth TA-80 Lowboy tractors, and three garbage trucks. And this will all be through Bryant Bank, which was approved, as said in the last commission meeting. Anybody got any discussion with that? All right, no discussion. Contracts, agreements, and grants, and MOUs. Approve a contract, contractual agreement between the state of Alabama through the ALDOT and two Limestone County Commissions, and the Limestone County Commission for the widening and additional turn lanes of Road 127 at the Elkmont Elementary School, and this is the project STP AA-0127. And anybody got a discussion with that? And that's exactly what we talked about a minute ago. No discussion with that, we'll move on. All right, next on here will be to approve a service agreement with the Laosie Group for a copier service in the judge's probate office over here. This service agreement was previously left off of the last month, last commission meeting. It was one that we had missed, so. Anybody got any discussion with that? And third on here will be to approve an agreement with Integra Water LLC for the placement of private sanitary sewer within the right-of-way of the Limestone County Commission. And this is up around the golf course on Southern Gales. I had spoke with Darryl Williamson, the water authority, and he's fine with this. And I think they have a couple representatives here, if anybody has a question for them during the middle of the meeting, but this will be allowing them, just like we do with any cable provider or anything, they're just lumping some of that.
This, this would be similar to what Limestone County Water and Sewer has. They'd just be operating as a private sewer entity, so. It just kind of formalizes that agreement as far as what, what each parties were responsible for.
Anybody got any discussion with that, any questions? All right, next on here will be to approve for the Limestone County Commission to accept a local permit revenue loss fund administration grant awarded and start the process of dis- of dispersments. Anybody got discussion with that?
Is that the pistol permit reimbursement?
Yes, it is. That'd be, yeah, that is the pistol permit. And I don't think we actually got anything this last time, did we, Drew? I don't think Limestone County qualified this last time.
I think that's right.
I think that's right. And I may be wrong with that, but I think it was, I don't think Limestone County actually qualified in this first go-round. But that's what that is. That is, that's what that's for. Anybody else got any discussion with that? And number five on here will be to approve, to award, a contract to the Howell Fencing for the, for eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars for fencing at the North Jefferson Street. This is old LNS property, and anybody got a discussion with that?
That's where I got it. Is that a chain link fence?
It is, it's a chain link fence. Black, it's almost thirteen hundred feet.
Thirteen hundred feet?
Yeah, three, three twenty-four-foot wide gates for access to it.
Three gates?
Thank Mark for getting on that. I know the bid came in a whole lot higher than what that was, but, but he actually brought the price down for us, being a temporary fence and all. It'll, it'll meet our requirements, and I know you cut the costs way down for us, and I appreciate that.
Anybody else got any more discussion with that?
Mark, that's where recycling's going to go as well, right?
Yes, that'll be a, a drop location for recycling. It's kind of going to be a multi-use for the next, next few years until that Sugar Hill property, if we proceed with that, not a thing.
It'll be more or less fenced, it's a secured lot, so we can put garbage trucks and other equipment and whatever we need to store there.
What if we wanted to put an animal shelter there?
I mean, the fence, the fence is large enough to accommodate just about anything that we might want to do. Maybe not multiple things at the same time, but the fenced area will be large enough to accommodate any, about any, of any service individually. But that, that's kind of one of the negatives of that site, is, is not being able to, to accommodate really more than one service at a time. But, but this is, this would, this would fence the entire rocked area that's out there right now that's kind of usable right at this moment.
Hopefully, we got other things going for the animal. But it is an idea, Danny.
Yeah, I was supposed to mention, that was going to fence the whole rocked area, is what it was going to do.
All right, any more discussion with, with the fencing area? All right, moving on, budget revisions. We have four budget revisions listed below. First one will be District 4 is for temporary help, construction equipment, motor vehicle, and budgetary fund balance, and that's all listed there. Then with engineering, we have a, a three hundred and eighty thousand dollar, this is land purchase, if everything goes. The sheriff's office, we have one there, and then we have one to the commission office, it's ninety thousand. That is for, the commission office, let me explain, that is for the fence, because that's where the property was re- where the property was originally purchased from, was purchased through the commission office. So it was coming out of the commission office's general fund balance to do any improvements we're doing on the property. It won't come out any other thing, so. Any discussion with any one of the budget revisions? All right, moving on, merchant purchases, we have none, board appointments, we have none, award of bids, we have four bids here to award. First one is for refrigeration equipment parts, it's for Whittichon and East Coast backup. What we've done was, we've just had a hard time getting materials and, you know, off the state bidding list and stuff, so we sent out a local bid for maintenance to buy supplies from local people, so that was what this is about. And the plumbing, et cetera, the park supply, and Lowe's is the backup on that one. And then the next one will be pharmaceutical drug services and supplies. This is HIS Pharmacy, and so that was for Immaculate Medical, I'm quite sure. And then the D3 is a truck for District 3. So anybody got any additions or anything they need to talk about on one of these? All right, no discussion. Moving on, personnel, policies, and staffing. We have a couple of hires here. If it's all right with y'all, the first two are hire the same date or for the same position, we'll just take them up one most if anybody has anything. So it'll be to approve to hire Stephen Copper Posey as a corrections officer, which is effective 221 to 23 pending a drug screening, and approve to hire Logan Tyler Martin as a corrections officer, same thing pending drug screening. Anybody got a discussion with either one of those? Y'all mind taking them up together one most?
No.
We'll do that, put those two together in the commission meeting. All right. And the third on here will be to approve to give the engineer, Mark Massey, the constitutional authority to hire temporary drivers in solid waste department for the maximum of 30 days each or until approval as a next temporary classified employee at the next available commission meeting. And what this is for is, we're starting a solid waste, and if something happens with a temporary driver or something, this gives Mark the authority. And Drew talked to me about it the other day, to where if we had to hire part-time somebody to get us through or something, if we have somebody leave or something doesn't work out, he gives him the authority to hire, have a backup list to hire somebody, and then we can approve at the next commission meeting if we elect to hire that person full-time. Does anybody got a discussion with that?
Well, this, Mark, can we bring some on part-time before we get to start dating? When, if we do hire them full-time, just switch them over to full-time?
That's what this would be. So if we were to have somebody leave, it doesn't put us in a position to where we can't, we don't have routes that aren't being covered, things like that. So we would be able to have kind of a list to pull from, and then if, if that, if that person works out, then at the next available commission meeting, then we could present that to you guys for approval as a full-time person. So this is just to kind of give us some flexibility to make sure that all the routes are covered because we know that, that solid waste is a, I mean, it's a time-sensitive endeavor, so, so trying to make sure that we can cover those routes and things like that without having to go through the standard process of a two-week advertisement and then, then put it on the next available commission meeting. And that whole time routes not being covered, this just kind of gives us that ability to make sure that we can get that taken care of.
We plan on hiring some, I guess, part-time before we start April the 1st?
We, this week, we're beginning interview, the interview process for all the positions, and then we'll have recommendations at upcoming meeting for hires for those positions.
But to answer your question, I think we all have loaded driver.
The goal would be, my goal with your, with you guys' approval, but it'll be presented really at the next meeting or would be to go ahead and hire them and, and bring them on board a couple weeks early, let them get familiar with the trucks, the routes, those type things. So it may be something where if they have another job or something, they're able to work afternoons, but just to kind of a part-time over a couple of weeks until, and get, get familiar with the process before they begin service full-time on the first week of April.
And April 3rd is coming fast.
Yes, it is.
Anybody else got a discussion with anything dealing with this? All right, merit increases, we have several listed below. Anybody have any issues or discussion with anybody on the merit decreases? If not, we'll move on to engineer support. Mr. Massey, go ahead.
Thank you. We have one subdivision is, surprisingly, all we have today, but it's a minor subdivision for preliminary and final. It's Clark subdivision. This is a replat of tracks one and two. It's taken those tracks and turned them into three, so three lots in District 1. This is on Hayes Mill Road. And so that's all that we have as far as consideration of subdivisions today. I've given each one of you a draft kind of construction paving list. This is, like I said, at this moment, it's just a draft. There's a list of some projects on the back, on the back page as well, that it's kind of how we got to this point. Over the next couple of weeks, I just ask you to kind of review that and get back with me, and so we can make any changes so that we'll have something available for a kind of our construction season schedule. So like I said, this is, this is just a draft. It's not to vote on today, but it's just to kind of give you, give you an update of where we are and kind of where our minds going on the work. This list here is very ambitious, so it's, it's more work than we've done in a single year. I know since I've been here, it's about, and this list doesn't include the rebuild Alabama list that's already been approved. So, so I mean, we're looking at, we're looking at about 50 miles of road if any form of this list gets approved. We're looking at about 50 miles of road that would be, be done, including the rebuild Alabama this next, this construction season. So like I said, we're talking almost $7 million in road work that's being completed. So like I said, this is, this is just a draft at this point, but I just wanted to, while we were all together, give you an opportunity to, to look at it and know, know where my mind is, and then we can sit down and talk specifics over the next couple of weeks and kind of get dialed in to what, what becomes our, our construction schedule for the year. And that's all that I have for you.
So you took care of one and two at the same time? Good deal. You got anything else, Mark?
That's it.
Anybody else got anything for Mark? All right, no discussion there. We'll move on. Other business, we have to approve sell-on gov deals. First thing on here is, oh, it's only two things on here, is two Dodge trucks from District 1. One of them's out of the solid waste, one of them's out of the regular District 1. That's just surplus equipment. Anybody got a discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman, these are just trucks that have been replaced, so I'm just going to get them out of, off the lot. It's just surplus property is what it is.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And we have no discussion. We'll recess for 15 minutes, so just give us, we'll be back here, I'm going to say 9:40, I mean, 9:50. Add 15 there, ain't it right?